At this time, we will call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Dee Trutchal.
Here.
Pfeiffer.
Here.
President Fannestill.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Lager.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
And trustees Holquist and DeBoer are excused.
Thank you. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Trutchal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stands on one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Anybody that would like to speak in public comments can go to the microphone at this time. Anybody for public comments? Go ahead. If you just step towards the podium and then state your name and address.
My name is Jack Tomkowitz. I live at 675 Ray Drive. My neighbor Kai Ryder's here. He's at 655 Ray Drive. So my wife, Chris, and I just wanted to thank the board and thank the police chief. We live on that section of the Ice Age Trail that had the dog walking issue. And I've been meaning to do this for six months, and I just wanted to thank you all for helping us out. And Chief Torn, not Chief Torn.
He's not here at this moment.
Okay, I was gonna say, you look different. Just thanks. You know, the non-emergency number works well. I don't know how many you actually see, but it's gone down a lot. And so it's working. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Then we'll move on to our first item of business, which is a consideration of the village board minutes for the May 13th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Now we have items related to the vouchers. We have a consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $2,168,792.11.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for $2,168,792.11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers for the $2,168,792.11. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, please. On page three, general administration, we had a bill for five-beagle training and consulting for $8,000. Was that for the fire department? And why is it under general, then? Shouldn't it be under fire department?
It's under community relations, not general. So we just have it under community relations.
The one I've got has general admin.
It is, but it's the account that it's coded to is community relations.
Okay, and is that a one-time?
That was the final bill for all the services.
And that's the total bill year-to-date?
Yeah.
And we're done with it, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Let me just see. I thought I had one more. Okay, I'm good. Thank you. I'm done.
Anybody else in discussion or questions? I'll call the question. All in favor of paying the vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related to licenses and permits. We have a consideration of a restricted species permit application from Sean Hoppy, is that correct, at 320 Prospect Avenue. If you could just step towards the microphone. And then just say your name and address.
Sean Hoppy, 320 Prospect Avenue.
And just a brief description of what you're looking to get.
Just, we would like to get a permit for chickens. We eat a lot of eggs, and we like them fresh as possible. So we figured it's fairly cheap to keep some chickens and why not give it a shot?
There are other chickens on this block currently, and Mr. Jambertz has no issues with any of the chickens on his road currently.
You're looking to have three total?
Yeah, and then when we renew next year, if all goes well, we might add a few, but for now, just three.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve Sean Hoppy's application for restricted species chickens.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the restricted species permit for Sean Hoppy at 320 Prospect Avenue. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have review and possible action of a special event application for the farmer's market. This is from Greg and Wendy Adams, June 23rd, 2024 through October 20th, 2024.
Greg Adams, 91 armor road, Oconomock, Wisconsin. I forgot where I lived. Oconomock, Wisconsin. This is my wife, Wendy Adams, same address. Yeah, we took it over this year. Amber Sharp was the one that was like in charge of this part of it. And she's gotten too busy with her husband being at the party department. So we said we'd take it over this year. We're kind of looking to go in the same place again, right next to the Grissom there. And we'll just deal with cars as they come along, you know, no big deal, as long as you guys are cool with it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know you talked about possibly the lot here. We'd also talked about, you know, one day maybe going into Nixon or Centennial or another park. But for the current year, it's hard. This lot, people can park 24/7, and we do have several vehicles that do it. So they'd be, anywhere we go in a public lot, they'll kind of be going around it.
They did do Nixon a while back, Amber said, and it did not work out at all. We couldn't just get anybody to go back there, she said. I don't know why. I have no clue why, because the park is always busy every time we go over there. But I just, I don't know. You know, the bathrooms are right there, too, you know, I mean, stage is there. A lot of people cook out over there, too. So I don't know. I don't know. It just didn't work out. And most of the vendors were kind of against it. So they just said, hey, why don't we just stay where we're at? Maybe if something comes up throughout the year, we come up with another idea or something, you know, we can give it a shot, you know?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
On this drawing?
Yeah.
Have you seen it, right?
Yes.
Are all these vendors, are they contracted to be there, or have they said they'll be there every Sunday? Or is this standard?
It's, most of them are there the whole time. There is other markets or other big events going on that they sneak away one day for.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what we got right now. We're taking application, or taking people calling us constantly. And I think-
I think we're 10 to 15 right now.
Right now, about 15 people are committed.
Committed.
Oh, that's good. Okay, thank you.
We just gotta get, I gotta get more diligent with the signs, you know, putting them up and make sure I take them down at the end of the day. You know, that's the tough part. So people, people forget. They don't remember, you know. It's every Sunday, but they still forget.
Make a motion that we approve the special event application for the farmer's market for Greg and Wendy Adams, June 23rd, 2024 through October 20, 2024?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the special events permit for the farmer's market for Greg and Wendy Adams for June 23rd, 2024 through October 20th of the same year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a review and possible action of special event application for Palmer's Tent Event Gala at 122 East Capital Drive on September 8th, 2024. If you, yeah, just brief.
It's the same thing we've done for years. We closed the street from Goodwin to Tabby's roughly now. We're not going all the way to the gas station anymore. That's not there. And-
Jerry, I'm sorry, if I could just have you state your name, so it'll-
Oh, I'm sorry.
...not the recording for it.
Jerome Arenas. You want the address of the business or my home?
Home's fine. Business is fine.
122 East Capital Drive, Heartland, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
53029. Absolutely. So it's the same thing we've been doing for the last, this will be 17 years that we've been involved. Since we came to Heartland, we've raised 2.9 million when we've closed the street. And to date, we've raised 3.9 million. And obviously, we couldn't do that without the support of the community letting us shut down the road. And we really appreciate that. And last year's event alone raised 310,000. They go to a variety of different charities, none of which goes to Palmer's Steakhouse.
Questions?
I just had a comment. You'll notice Chief Misco just made a comment to use vehicles between the barricades and the tent like you have done in previous years.
Absolutely.
That's all. He just didn't see it on there. Wanted to make sure that that was addressed.
Yeah, and usually the band people put up their big trucks, so.
I guess I'll have a question, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Will you need anything from DPW on the day of or leading up to?
I think I put request for just the barricades. And we, and we put them up. They drop them off the night before.
Okay.
Friday night or whatever night it's there. I just see them and we put them up.
Okay.
Only question I have is, on the application, it says 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
And then on this little memo that you wrote, it says 7:00 AM. So I didn't know what was the correct time.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, okay.
Yeah, that's the setup. Takes that long to get tents up and everything in place. And the event starts at 4:00.
I'll make a motion to approve the Palmer's Tent Event Gala at 122 East Capital Drive, September 8th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Tent Event Gala at 122 East Capital Drive on September 8th, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Well done.
Have a good event.
Thanks, Marie.
I would ask also for a vote to extend his liquor license to the street of the area that they're having the event.
I'd like to-
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to extend their liquor license to include the street as drawn on the, for the tent event on that day.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for the liquor license for Palmer's to be extended out into the street, just like the map shows. That was submitted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
You're free to drink in the street.
Thank you guys very much. Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.
We have, now we have a consideration of operators' bartenders' licenses. It's an extensive list. Yep, I think that's the best way to do it. There's a list that, yeah, I mean, there's 27 names of bartender licenses that are for renewal. So.
I'll make a motion then to approve the operator's bartender license for the 27 individuals listed on here. What's that?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the renewal operator bartender's licenses that the chief has put in under renewals. And he approved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now that, now we have a-
Just one name, please.
Okay, the chief, we have the new operators' bartenders' licenses. This is for Lauren, is that Bialis?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay.
Shouldn't we approve the bartender's license for Lauren Bialis?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartender's license, the new bartender's license for, what is that name again?
Lauren Bialis.
Lauren Bialis, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. That will be issued. Now we have, the chief of police has, we have an operator's bartender's license for Shelley Dupras. Is that correct? Shelley Dupras, the, the chief of police has reviewed the below application and recommends denial. Do you want to go ahead and just give the reason for?
Yep. So, back in May of 2022, and the memo dated, May 9th of 2022, Ms. Dupras had previously applied for a bartender's, or I'm sorry, a operator license. And in May of '22, that was voted upon the board here, and that was denied at that time. Of note, there was operating while intoxicated, third offense that was not disclosed on her application at that time. And the specific question was, do you have any criminal or ordinance charges presently pending against you? And Ms. Dupress, Dupras checks no. In March of 2024, she was still on probation from her operating while intoxicated, third offense, which she would complete later on May 27th, 2024. However, in March of '24, she, being on probation at that time, also did apply for operator's license. And the rules of her supervision would not allow her to possess alcohol at that time. That was confirmed through her probation agent, and Ms. Dupras withdrew her application at that time. In a memo dated June 3rd, 2024, from Chief Misco, he states that Ms. Dupras had three convictions for OWI in 2011, '17, and 2022, which may classify her as habitual law offender regarding two alcohol-related crimes under Wisconsin statute 12504-sub-five-sub-B, which states, "No license or permit related to alcohol beverages may be issued under this chapter to any person who has habitually been a law offender or has been convicted of a felony unless the person has been duly pardoned." In addition, not much time has passed since Ms. Dupras has completed her probation for an alcohol-related crime. Chief Misco recommends denying Ms. Dupras' application. He would recommend, now that Ms. Dupras is no longer on supervision, that she may submit another application for consideration in 12 months if she's not involved in a crime that relate to her ability to make proper decisions as a licensed operator. So the options would be to deny the operator license for Ms. Dupras or approve the operator license for Ms. Dupras. And the chief's recommendation, again, is for denial.
Would like to speak. You can go, please step to the podium. Just state your name so that we have it on the recording.
Shelley Dupra. I realize I have, nobody knows more than me. I have screwed up. This is my job. I am 26 months sober. I remain to have the breathalyzer in my car, and I continue, I will continue to do so, in case I have the urge to go back to drinking. What else to say? I continue to hold a bartender license in Genesee Depot. I have this entire time, and there has been no issue. I obviously make more money at the Phoenix. I'd like to continue to work there. What else to say?
I just want to say she's an absolute asset to my team.
Did you say your name?
Sharif Feigenhauer. I own the Phoenix. I just wanted to say she's an absolute asset to my team, and it would be devastating to lose her.
And me as well. William Redford, 129 Cottonwood, co-owner of Phoenix. Just want to say that, you know, this, owning, owning the Phoenix in Heartland, that everybody around here is absolutely amazing. We try to, we try to give back to the community by decorating, bringing more people in the community. Shelley is definitely a part of our team. We really, it'd be devastating to lose her. I just hope you guys can look at, you know, she's had a license, continued to have a license, even though through the time that you guys wouldn't allow her. I think she's kind of suffered enough by having to work somewhere where she doesn't make nearly as much of money as she does here. Just would like you guys to really look at, look at what she's done for us up till now. She's worked for us for 10-plus years. It'd be really, really hurtful to lose a great member of our team. Thank you.
Anything else that you want to add as the applicant? Anything else that you want to add as the applicant?
I don't think so.
Anybody have questions? No? I do want to, is, you've, so you're working in a different place now because you were not working in Heartland?
Out in Genesee Depot.
Okay.
I have 11 years, 10 years there.
Okay. Right. Yep, technically, the person can, they can work, but they aren't the operator, which is the person that's overseeing.
Somebody overseeing.
Correct.
Correct. Correct. And, and, excuse me, Shelley, you're currently bartending while either Sharif or Bill are there, right?
Somebody with an operator's license, correct.
Yeah.
Has to be, yes.
That's the only time, yeah, that's the only time we can allow her to work, because she doesn't have a license.
She needs to be supervised, I guess, is what they say.
Supervised.
I would like to make a motion at this time to deny the operator license for Ms. Dupree or Dupra.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the license for Mrs. Dupra, Dupras. Any discussion? The, you know, for myself, I guess I'll just throw in, because I understand it's a very hard thing to come forward here in front of the board, with someone being not having drank and not having alcohol for a long time. That's a major accomplishment. I get that. And I do understand chief saying, give it a little bit more time. How long have you been, this doesn't change anything on how I'm going to vote. I'm just asking, how many months was it?
26.
26.
Over two years, yeah.
I, I'm just making this comment. This isn't part of the motion, because the motion was already made. But I would, I can completely understand the chief making that recommendation, but I would, I would, for that long, sober and not drinking, I think it might be nice to meet in the middle and say, in six months, if you come back for a license and you have not had any contact, you know, with something that would mean that you can't be an operator bartender. I understand that doesn't help her right now, but it does shave six months and gets her back into the community. She wants to, and she knows that she has that as motivation, which means by the time she would come back, she'd be at 32 months sober. It's just something that I think should be considered down the road. That's not, that's not guaranteed. I'm just making my statement.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think 26 months is pretty significant. That's showing a lot of restraint and effort and, and being successful and not drinking for that long. So I think that's excellent.
And what you just, you said 20, was it 26 months?
Mm-hmm.
How, just, your third offense occurred at the end of May in '22. That's not 26 months ago. That's 24.
April 2nd.
The offense was in the, I'm sure it was-
End of May was-
Correct.
Okay. Because I know at one time, we decided, we decided we're going at the date of conviction, not when it happened.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I believe it was a year, a year from conviction date, but it's kind of up to you guys what you decide. It's a year plus. So I, I guess the only thing I would like to say, and with that being said, maybe in six months, we can review this. That's kind of where I, that was my next question, is how long do we have to wait, or is it indefinite? That's all. Thank you.
It's not indefinite.
Okay.
A reapplication, and I don't believe we have any law that prohibits it. You could, you can reapply in, in six months.
Okay.
A person always has the right to apply, just for anyone, for the knowledge. So, anybody else that wants to add anything? I'll call the question. The motion was to deny the operator's license. All in favor of denial? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
So that passes, and I just suggest that you come back. I mean, everybody has the right to, but I suggest you come back. And, and the reason I'm saying this is because with you having that motivation, and again, don't take any of this as a for sure, only because it's just me saying it, and the board has to decide those things collectively. But what it will show is, like, was being alluded to by the chief of technically on the, on the probationary period, you weren't supposed to possess alcohol. And so what this six months does is now it's just you deciding all on your own. And I'm not saying you're not going to. That's why I wanted to stress how much of an achievement that is. But what this shows is now, even though legally you could possess alcohol, you're choosing that, you're choosing that on your own. And it's not, you just need to not be in trouble with the police. It doesn't mean, there's no law against you going and drinking. I hope you're understanding what I'm saying. But you're able to come back, and, and I hope you stay on it, too, if it's working for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item that we have on the agenda. Yeah.
Liquor license, all the categories can be approved.
Yep. So we have- So we have, okay, so we can approve all the liquor licenses in one shot? So this is, sorry.
This is the two details, this is more.
Yeah, so we can take, I mean, this is Class B beer, Class B liquor, Reserve Class B beer, Class B liquor, Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class A liquor, Class B beer, and Class C wine licenses. We can take them all in one.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the annual renewal license and permits for a period July 1, 2024 through June 31 of 2025. June 30th, I'm sorry, 2025.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor licenses that were applied for on, on the list that was read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have on our agenda. Thank you. Now we have consideration of the annual renewable licenses that expired June 30, 2024, not requiring a public hearing. That's the arcade licenses, amusement device licenses, and cabaret licenses, and cigarette licenses, and weights and measure licenses.
Do all those at once as well?
Yes.
Motion that we approve the annual renewal of licenses expiring June 30, 2024, not requiring a public hearing for the items read.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve arcade, amusement device, cabaret, cigarette, and weights and measures licenses.
One quick question.
Sure.
And maybe Sandy can answer this. I don't, what is the difference between arcade license and amusement device?
So it's up to the individual. If they have a lot of them, they can just go for an arcade and it's $500 flat fee. Otherwise, on, in amusement game devices, each one is listed and paid for individually.
Is there a maximum on the arcade license?
There's no maximum.
No maximum. Or is there a difference? I know we, I'd asked you this early and I don't remember what you said. Is there a differential between children's games or the, the ones where, where you're supposed to be over 18 and you can win money?
So I do not license the gaming where money is involved. They're not legal, so they're not licensed by the state or myself.
Well, I mean, like the ones with the money, the?
If someone chooses to have them.
Well, Sweet Dreams has that.
That's their, yes, there's multiple locations in the village that have them and that's their choice. And that's enforced by the Department of Revenue. Their agents do that. And it, they have rendered the decision that if a licensed premise has more than five, they will enforce it. If it's under five, they do not.
Oh, so that, those are not licensed through us?
They are not licensed through us.
Not legal, under five is a misdemeanor, over five is a felony. So they won't really do anything until somebody has over five, which nobody does. Yeah.
Still need to vote on that, correct? Or did we even get a motion on it?
We have motion. I think we need a vote.
Okay. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items that were referred from our June 3, 2024 Park and Recreation Board meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. We do have that. Yep, I, sorry. We have a, hold on, I'm just getting my bearings here. Thank you. We have a discussion, I'm very sorry. Discussion and possible consideration of park mobile food vendor application for Dough Nation mini donuts to sell donuts in Nixon Park. If you'd like to go to the podium.
We also have samples here.
Oh, great.
Samples, bribes, call it whatever.
We're always hungry.
Chris and Amy Fanning, 577 Bradford Way in Heartland. We are just looking to be part of the, some of the Thursday night concerts at Nixon Park. We do events all over Lake Country.
Thank you.
And we're doing like the Heartland Street Dance and we do a lot in Oconomowak, Exonia. So just looking to be at eight, oh lordy. Eight dates at the Nixon Thursday night concerts with our Mobile Dough Intend, where we sell donuts by the dozen, mini donuts by the dozen.
Need to talk, does Pat have to be with our contract with him about no other food? We don't have to ask him?
He knows, yeah.
He does?
We talked to him, yeah.
Oh, great, that's kind of what I was getting at.
He sent us here, yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
You guys approved Little Dippers.
Dippers.
Oh, okay, I already forgot about, okay. Gotcha. Donuts are great.
They are great, I agree.
So at, at the park board last week, park board made a motion to approve donation to sell mini donuts in Nixon Park for the suggested dates barring the approval of the rec department for dates that may conflict with other park events. The motion also included putting a cap on the mobile food vendor license to $150, I believe. Other than having a cap like that, it's $75 for each time they would come for a permit. This was recommended if there was not already a cap in place and there is not technically a cap in place within the park. There's only a cap if it's outside of the park as far as a mobile food vendor. So that was a part of the motion that was passed.
And just to bounce off that, so the Gristmo has the food trucks now. So it's, they're allowed one and it's a cap of the 150. So that's, they're just trying to say they can do it in the park for these dates and it's just a cap instead of a permit paying for each time. That's all the park board was trying to do, I believe.
Right. And the, the only opposition voiced during the park board meeting was to have a higher fee for businesses that didn't have a brick and mortar within the actual village. So there was, because Little Dippers has a brick and mortar, that was brought up during the park board discussion.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
So then because there is multiple days listed, the actual fee would be 150 or?
That's what the park board did.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve donation for the dates listed in, from June through September in Nixon Park.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve. It is donation. I was like, wait a minute, I better look at me. Donation for being able to sell out of a mobile food cart or a park food vendor, park mobile food vendor cart. Got to get the wording, it's going to be like 75 different ways of food.
And the other thing too, that, that if you're donation, they do take 10% of the proceeds and donate it so, to whatever we want. So you were right when you said donation two different ways.
The, for comments, I guess I would want to say that I do see on the application that it says that $75 has been collected. And I know we had set a max of 150, but if we're going that way, then 75 more dollars would have to come in before that gets issued. Is that accurate or is it, it's already been issued?
No. It has not been issued, so there would need to be a payment of $50 before the permit could be issued.
75.
75.
Oh, sorry, yep, 75.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
The samples were great.
They'll give those to staff upstairs.
They'll take those upstairs. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we got, as I was trying to jump ahead. Oh yeah, now we have the audit presentation.
I know, I am Michelle Walter. I'm a senior manager at Baker Tilly. I did not come bringing donuts, so sorry. You can enjoy your donuts while we talk. But I'm going to briefly go through very high-level presentation on the audit and the financial statements themselves. So I believe you should all have copies of the financial statements as well as the handouts. But really overall, the objective of our audit is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. For 2023, we were able to issue a clean, unmodified opinion. So this is the highest level of assurance you can get from your auditors. It means that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, that they have all the required disclosures, and that accounting principles have been consistently followed from year to year. I will say that the one difference there is that there's some new accounting standards that were implemented in 2022 and there was nothing to be implemented in 2023 despite having to do an evaluation of a new standard. In the financial statements, there is a management's discussion and analysis. So if you're one that likes to look at the financial reports themselves, this is on pages three through 15. But this is a summary level of what management put together to kind of summarize 2023. But I'm going to go.
Sorry, I don't mean to stop you. There's someone out there and I don't know what they're doing. They walked back and forth like four or five times and I just didn't know what. Yeah, they were standing right outside the door and then went back. Yeah, now he's over there.
Maybe trying to get into the community center if you don't mind, Brian? Just checking.
Oh. Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no problem. So I'm going to go high-level summary of the fund statements of the village for 2023. So if you want more details, this can be found on pages 22 to 23 of your financial statements. But overall, the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village, overall, it increased fund balance about $467,000 in 2023, up to fund balance of about $6.6 million. And of this, there's a couple different classifications of that fund balance. So there's about $4,000 that is referred to as non-spendable.
Sorry.
So non-spendable, this is cash that's gone out the door for prepaid items, but it hasn't hit your fund balance yet. There's about $1.4 million of assigned fund balance and this is monies that management has decided to kind of earmark for, for, for future items. So the largest items here are for future asset purchases, veterans memorial, or future assessments. That leaves about $5.1 million of unassigned fund balance, which is the monies that the village can use to spend as needed. So the village has a policy to maintain 25% of total general annual revenues in that unassigned category. And at the end of 2023, this was actually at about 58%. So a very healthy fund balance for the general fund. The next columns are for TIF 4, 5, and 6, and 7. And minus TIF 5, which closed during 2023, TIF 4, 6, and 7 all had deficit fund balances at the end of the year, with TIF 6 being at about $1.3 million. Now, these deficit fund balances aren't necessarily something to worry about, but those will be recovered with future tax increments. So nothing unusual necessarily in that respect. Then we're going to shift over to the debt service fund of the village. For 2023, the debt service fund increased fund balance $124,000 up to $260,000. All of these amounts are restricted to pay off debt service. The capital projects fund or the village projects, this increased fund balance by about $987,000 and there was some new debt during 2023 of about $3.2 million for, for projects. Fund balance at the end of this year was about $5.5 million. And once again, this is split out into three different buckets. The first is non-spendable, which is about $1.3 million. And this is essentially an offset to those, that TIF deficit. So if something were to happen and the TIFs were to close out, this portion is kind of set aside in the capital projects fund. Then there's $3.7 million, which is restricted and this is unspent debt proceeds. So they are restricted for the purpose of that debt issue. And that leaves about $381,000 in assigned fund balance, all for future capital projects. The corporate reserve is the last, what we call major fund of the village. This fund increased fund balance by about $27,000 up to $1.5 million. This $1.5 million is all assigned for future equipment purchases. The final column is the non-major funds and this is the special revenue funds and then the developers' funds. So all of these are combined in one column. Fund balance decreased about $101,000 during the year. And this is broken out between restricted fund balance, which 603,000 of this is impact fees. So those are all restricted for those specific purposes. And the remaining 98,000 is committed mostly for garbage collection. The next couple funds that we're going to quickly talk about are the water sewer and the dental insurance fund. So these are your enterprise funds. The water utility had net income during 2023 of about $272,000. The sewer utility had about $400,000. And the ending net position in the water utility was about $13.8 million. Now, of this net position, there's a big chunk of it, about $10.5 million, which we call net invested in capital assets. And that is the infrastructure and the ground minus the debt that would be related with that. So it's not cash or, or funds that you would usually spend. So leaves about $3.2 million of unrestricted net position in the water utility. Similarly, in the sewer utility, there's $10 million at near, at year end. 4.8 million is that net invested in capital assets with 5.4 million being unrestricted. That was the financial numbers in a nutshell. Couple other things to point out. On pages 54 to 57 of your financial statements kind of lays out the long-term obligations of the village. And so the governmental activities, which is everything except the water, sewer, and dental funds, there's about $22.2 million of long-term obligations. And this is made up of general obligation debt premiums, net pension liability with the state for WRS, both life and health OPEB liabilities as well as compensated absences. Village has the ability to borrow about $99 million of general obligation debt and so you're well within your debt limit of, at about 21.3 million. The second report that we issue as part of the audit is our reporting and insights. And this is essentially our communication with you, the board, as to summarize the audit. So we first start by laying out the objectives, responsibilities, and the approach of the audit. Then we would go through any internal control issues at the village and I'm happy to report we don't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Just a couple of kind of control recommendations surrounding cash receding or IT best practices. We then have certain required communications we have to have as your auditors. So any new accounting policies, which there were none in 2023, any estimates that are included in your financial statements, any disagreements that we had with management, which I'm happy to say we had none. And then just our independence as your auditors. And the last section of this report is kind of looking forward to future audits. So some documentation on new accounting standards that are coming up as well as our communication to you, the board, just kind of putting a plug out there that audit's not just at year end. You know, if something were to come up during the year, you know, we're available to have conversations and we, we would welcome that. So in conclusion, I have my contact information as well as Wendy Younger, who's the partner on the engagement. So please feel free, if you have any questions, to reach out. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now.
When you were reviewing the sewer income, I think you were showing $400,000 in income, right?
Yes, sewer utility had about $400,000 added to net position.
Does that fluctuate a lot year to year?
It depends kind of on what happens with the given rates. I know there was a rate increase again in 2023, so that, that bumped it up. And then depending on kind of the activity for the expenses, it could fluctuate.
He's coming.
Try, well, that's water that is coming today. We try to do smaller increases that way we don't have to do a large increase. So with the sewer utility, and you'll hear about it with the water utility in a little bit, if we do a project and replace any mains, we're looking at around one, one or two million dollars. we're looking at around one or two million dollars to replace that. Trying to get to a point where we can do that with cash on hand instead of borrowing. So that's the ultimate goal of it.
Oh, I thought, I didn't know.
Very good summary, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right. So now we have a whole lot of water. We have the next item on our agenda is review and consideration of awarding State Highway 83 Water Main rehabilitation contract to the low bidder Mid-City Corporation for the amount of $2,313,825,000 in use of ARPA funds to offset that portion of the cost.
So the Highway 83 Water Main is a critical 2,100-foot section of 12-inch water main that supplies a southwest business park in the village. Over the last 10 years, there have been four leaks that have been expensive to repair due to the water main being located through a marsh along Highway 83 and actually under the Bark River. Access, poor soils, and extensive dewatering efforts account for these costly repairs. The poorer condition of this pipe and the corrosive fittings and fasteners for this main have been contributing factors for the last four main breaks. CIP lining is what we brought to you guys before in the budgeting. This is something we've talked about before. But CIP lining is the selected method that we've chosen for rehabilitation of this main. This will make use of the existing pipe and insert a liner that will cure to become structural. The village has allocated $1,55,214.53 of ARPA funding for this rehab project. And the proposal for this was received from Mid-City was $2,313,825. Staff recommends awarding the Highway 83 Water Main Rehab Project to Mid-City for the sum of $2,313,000 and $825.
So the bad news on this one is originally it was estimated to be $1.2 million. The quotes for dewatering, everything else, are significantly higher. We have the ARPA funds that have to be earmarked by the end of 2024. So that means we need to have a signed contract in order to use those ARPA funds, or we would have to return that $1 million. I'll let Ryan Amman talk about it a little bit. But there were several other vendors that didn't want to apply. They don't, it just, this is a water main in an accurate area. It's gonna be done properly, staying in the steel. We had looked at an alternative route, because this creates a loop in a water system. We looked at running a line parallel on Cottonwood. It would not provide the water pressure needed for Medline and other large users, which we can't change that because their fire services, protective fire services are based off of that water pressure. We looked at lining it with something that is allowed in 21 states, but not in Wisconsin. And Wisconsin said, nope. So this is our option. Unfortunately, other bidders didn't have a desire. It's very costly, I'll let Ryan get into that. The $1,55,000 will take away, so this project will cost 1.3 million of water funds. And that will either be used by cash on hands or we will get a state trust fund or clean water fund loan, something of that nature. But go ahead, Ryan, I'll let you-
Well, you really covered that pretty well. These issues with these breaks are, seven, eight years in the making. There's been four of them. My understanding is it's $50,000 to $75,000 each time to repair, because you gotta get access down into the marsh. You have to lower the water level below the pipe, and it's just like bailing, bailing, bailing water. It's very hard to control the water through that whole marsh. So it's very expensive to repair. As Ryan said, we looked at all kinds of different options. And through some modeling and testing with village staff, with businesses in that part of the business park, changing the diameter of the water main to be smaller and pull a pipe through, or a secondary loop wasn't gonna provide the pressure and the flow needed in that business park. It would negatively impact their fire suppression systems. So as Ryan said, there was another option that we were looking at that these estimates were based upon, which is a spray-in liner, a different technique, and the state DNR won't approve it. They say it won't result in a structural pipe. And after looking at it, I really think you need a structural solution as if it's a brand-new pipe when this project is done. The main that's there right now is immediately adjacent to a 15-inch gravity sewer pipe. So we can't pipe-burst it. We can't drill right next to it, because it risks ruining or damaging the existing sewer pipe that's there as well. So it's a CIPP. It stands for Keared-In Place Pipeline Liner. So it's a flexible liner that has epoxy in it. They have to get in the marsh. They will use swamp mats to get down in there. They have to lower the water level of the marsh. And then they have to dig access pits in six locations along the pipe. Those access pits have tight sheeting, steel sheeting, all the way around, so that the soils don't cave in. And it's that absolute controlled environment that the Michaels Pipeline, who is a CIPP subcontractor, needs to successfully do the project. Then they essentially pull this flexible liner pipe through the main in six sections. They're about 500 feet each. And then they run hot boiling water through it to cure it and expand the liner to the inside of the pipe. So when it's all said and done, you're essentially gonna have a new pipe. It's just using the existing pipe that's there. We had multiple utility contractors within the last six months walk the site with us and village staff, look at the dewatering and the access and everything else. And I think when push came to shove, with it being such a specialty and high-risk project for the contractors, when they put their number to it, their number's higher than what they told us it would be when they were giving us the budgetary numbers. So the good news is Mid-City Corporation is the prime contractor. And Michaels Pipeline, which is a very well-known trenchless contractor, that's the team. It's the right team to do this project and do it right. And having access to the ARPA funds obviously is a good situation. But when it's all said and done, the purpose of this is to add upwards of 75 years of life to this pipe, which is 40 years old right now and is in a failing condition.
I have a couple of questions I don't know who wants to answer. When they're putting that into the pipe, and it start, they put in the hot water and it goes to expand, what happens if there's already a pre-existing crack in the old pipe?
They, before they do the lining part, they have to scour and clean the inside of the pipe first. And then they have to televise it and inspect the pipe second. And if there was a significant structural issue like that, they would have to dig that up and repair it. The way this pipe is failing is at fittings where there are non-stainless steel bolts. And those bolts have corroded, causing the joints to leak. And so, you know, everywhere there's a fitting, a hydrant, a valve, those bolts are at risk of having the same thing occur. So that'll be taken care of before they pull the lining through it.
And I know you guys have said you've gone, you've looked at all our alternative ways. There's no other place that we could get out of the swamp? There's nowhere else?
Not within the village limits, no.
And there's currently one hydrant that's turned off.
Yeah, so you gotta remember, this water main also supplies WeKnow and the resident Highway 83. There is an alternative solution that will not be discussed at this time to keep my blood pressure lowered.
Okay.
What is that?
Oh, you know what it is, and you know what the answer is.
I don't.
Once this is complete, it's gonna be just as good as a new pipe and fittings?
Yes.
And how long is that? How long before we have another break? I mean, are they, is it guaranteed that there's not, I'm, I want a whole new- I know it's expensive, but I know that. But how much better is this than putting in new?
Well, the pipe itself is in good shape when there have been breaks and they've been dug up. It's leaks, it's not breaks, it's leaks. And it's leaks at the fittings. So the pipe is in decent shape. It's wherever there's a fitting and it's bolted, that's where it's leaking. And that needs to be repaired.
The last repair was four days.
Yeah, and it was, the last repair was over $80,000 from Thomasini. And they're really the only one who's gonna get in there and do it. And that was six years ago, five, seven? It was a while. When it happens tomorrow, it'll be about $150,000 to $300,000. We've already had four breaks in the past couple weeks.
I just wish we could move it somewhere where it's not in the swamp. I call it swamp, but.
Wait, we evaluated, we did evaluate that option. So another option that we were looking at is the double mains along Cottonwood. And we did the testing and did the in-the-field testing, and the hydraulics weren't gonna work. And the fire systems in the businesses that are all established, they're all established based on the configurations of the pipelines that were out there when they built, which is 12-inch on both sides of the business park. And that provides the adequate flow and pressure that they need. It's being pressurized from the what's that, Covington? The Coventry Tower and the Hill Street Tower from both directions. And they need the loop around the business park to function and provide the adequate pressure for the fire systems.
Putting bigger pipes in there wouldn't? Okay, thank you.
Ryan, you said the current system's been in place 40 years?
Yeah, mid-eighties it was built.
And the expectation with this repair is, you know, have greater longevity, maybe as many as 75?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I say we move forward.
Yeah.
What? Considering what we have now. I know the answer to this, I think, but why did they choose to go through a marsh? No one had the foresight to be like, hey, we're gonna take some iron or whatever, galvanized, bolted stuff that's together and put it in the water?
Because 40 years ago, we decided to be great neighbors and have water services that hooked over to other properties.
I was thinking, as I'm looking at that, that possibly because that road didn't go through yet, I don't think. Nor sure our drive didn't connect yet.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
Let's award the South 83 Water Main Rehabilitation Contract to the low bidder Mid-City Corporation for the amount of $2,313,825, and use the ARPA funds to offset a portion of that contract cost.
I'll second.
It's been moved down seconded to approve the amount for this repair. That amount being $2,313,825 for the water main rehabilitation work that needs to be done on the water main that's running along Highway 83. Discussion? That's more than Riverwalk cost, or the TIF anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried, that's a tough one. I forgot to ask a question, so I'm gonna ask it now. That motion did carry. Are all of the bolts that are rusting out and falling apart getting replaced as part of this project?
No, the liner and the-
The fittings.
Yeah. But as that, I'm thinking it had 75 years. There's gonna be no bolts left at all.
Many of the fittings will be removed as a part of the project where their access pits are. Those are being located where the valves are, which is where a lot of the bolts are. So those will be removed as a, most of them will. Not all of them, but a lot of them will be removed because the access pits are located where those are.
And I also want everyone to understand that 30, 40 years ago, when we agreed to take on WeKnow and that resident, we have a duty to provide them water forever. So when we've had leaks, we wait till school's done to shut off something. And there's, for two houses, we have to make special occasions.
We don't have duty, it's called obligation because of whatever state law. It's not a duty. We give our people water. Enough of that. The motion passed. We're good. All right. Now we have the Vizier Sewer, yeah. Consideration to award the 2024 sanitary sewer televising to Vizier Sewer total project not to exceed $30,000.
So the Village of Heartland sanitary sewer televising every year is part of the sewer maintenance program. Staff looks out to see the streets that will be paved in the future and plans to have televising out two years from the paving project. Earlier this year, the board accepted a proposal from Vizier Sewer for a total of $1.35 per linear foot for televising. We got that, we kind of looked, and we're looking at where we were gonna go in the village. What we have predicted for paving is all PVC piping. It's all relatively new piping. We have current records of all four wind subdivisions. So we started looking elsewhere in the village that hasn't been televised. And the areas that haven't been televised, we haven't got a chance to televise our areas that are not conducive to televising, kind of like the 83 Water Main. They are through a swamp as well. So our interceptor in the village has not been televised, or we don't have recordings of that interceptor for some time. This was also recommended by R and M. If we're going through, we're spending the money on Highway 83 Water Main, that we should get televising of that sanitary sewer line that's directly connected or next to that water main. If we have any issues with that pipe, we can see it while we're actually next to it and working on it. So we are looking to televise that portion first, and then the interceptor that actually starts out in Hartridge Park on the north side of town and goes all the way to the south side of town through the swamp and hooks up to Delahart. So that's an area that we haven't televised. So the difference in pricing is because of the complicated access for Vizier Sewer to get their actual cameras in. So two-man crew that has street access is $295 per hour. And the easement access in the marsh and everything like that is a three-man crew. That's $415 per hour. So with the budget that we have, we put the limit on $30,000 for them not to exceed that and see where we get after they complete the 83 sewer main. Staff recommends awarding 2024 sanitary sewer televising contract to Vizier Sewer not to exceed the sum of $30,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 sanitary sewer televising to Vizier Sewer total project not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded to approve the Vizier Sewer, the 2024 sanitary sewer televising not to exceed amount is $30,000. Any discussion?
Yeah, will there be a pay-per-view for that televising, or?
If you'd like to see, you can come to my office, and we can look anytime.
Adam was thinking that people would like pay, you know, forty, fifty bucks.
Offset the thirty grand.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried. Now we have review and consideration of the water utility simplified. Sorry, T-Mobile. We have review and consideration of T-Mobile Tower contract renewal.
So this is a contract, this is a contract that's expiring this year. Again, for us, it's $38,413 a year. The rates will go up every 50 or by 15%. This is a no-brainer. After this one is signed, I will probably be reaching out to others to let them know that we do have another tower that is now available. But I wanna get these signed, and this is done. This was reviewed by Hector and Trace. This is a positive thing.
This is paying off the pay-per-view.
I'll make a motion that we approve the T-Mobile Tower contract renewal.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded to- to approve the T-Mobile Tower contract renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have review and consideration of a water utility simplified rate increase.
All right, so this is something that I go onto the website for the Public Service Commission. They have all of our data. Do an annual report. It spits out whether we're meeting our requirements under our previous study. If we're not, we're allowed to do a simplified rate increase. Don't have to. It's just if we don't, the longer we don't do that, we'll have a larger increase in the future. So, I bring it to you. I always recommend that you do it. Last time we did one was thirty percent. A full rate increase was thirty percent. Originally, when we ran the numbers, they were saying fifty-seven percent, and we weren't comfortable with that. So, we said, check the math and lower it. So, I knew this would happen. And especially with that water project coming up, we'll probably be eligible for it for the next couple of years now as well.
Ryan?
Yep.
There was an increase, it says December of twenty-three, and so on, six months later, we're gonna do another one?
It won't be till the end of the year. You can only do one once per year.
Okay, that was my question.
It's December. We always do it December sixteenth of that year, cuz that is the start of the first quarter of water rates, sewer rates. So, all of our rate increases are always on, uh, on twelve sixteen. You can't defer this to next year. You can't defer this to next year. It's a one-time shot, so.
No, I think it makes sense to do subtle raise increases. So, I'll approve the water utility simplified rate increase.
It's been moved in second to approve the, uh, the simplified rate increase for the water utility. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Sorry, guys. I'm gonna ask for a recess. I'm not gonna make that. Yep, we can be back in session. Thank you, guys, for that.
He's got you. Ben's got you.
Uh, now we have the review and consideration of cemetery fees.
Uh, yes, you'll remember, a short while ago, we reviewed the cemetery rules, which the board did adopt at their May thirteenth meeting. We also, as a part of that, took a look at our fees. And we put together a sheet comparing fees from area cemeteries and also discussed with Public Works what else is involved with the sale and the marking for monuments and the burial. They estimate seven visits to the cemetery for each one minimum. And taking a look at that and what we're currently charging, seven hundred and fifty dollars per grave. Staff was recommending a review and an increase to twelve hundred dollars per grave. Something new would be charging for transfers of deeds. I've, I've been here almost a year and a handful have come forward wanting to transfer them. There is a lot of work that goes into that. Notarized statements from relatives, authorizing it and such. So, we're just asking for a small forty-dollar transfer fee for those. Right now, we're not charging anything. There are a small amount, fifteen grave sites that are small in size, that would not accommodate a full body burial. So, we're suggesting that those be available for infant and young child, children up to the age of three at no charge to the family.
I, for that transfer fee, I was looking at what is already out there. I think that that should be a hundred dollars. With all the work that goes into it, to transfer that, I think a hundred dollars, it's, it's what other municipalities have. And I think with all the work, it should cover our cost.
That's, I was, I agree. I was gonna ask you, how much, you say it takes a lot of time. I mean, how many man-hours do we talk?
So, it can vary. It can be, you know, a simple one where there's one relative and they wanna transfer it, you know, and there's not a lot of work that goes into it. There can be other situations when there's five or six brothers and sisters and some are in other states. So, I'm getting notarized statements here. I'm emailing them to someone out of state. They go to the bank. They get it back to me a few days later. It's just, you know, so it can vary. So.
Agreement. I thought forty seemed pretty, pretty cheap. I mean, if it's free now, that's really cheap.
Whatever the board would wanna do, in the end, this needs to be done. I'm sorry?
Maybe compromise and go up a little bit to seventy-five?
Whatever the board chooses. I will put, these fees need to be put in the form of a resolution. So, after tonight's decision, we'll put that together for a future meeting, but.
I, I do kinda like the, just throwing my two cents, I like the hundred dollars that Ann said, because this probably won't get addressed for, I bet it'll be eight or ten years before we'll, and maybe we will. But it might be a while before we go at it again. And we've been really behind on all this time.
It's fair.
You know, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. And it doesn't happen very often, you know, if someone wants the deeds changed, you know, it's generational. That's just my two cents.
So, you're trying to get a gauge of what the board wants to do and that we're gonna bring it back in a resolution?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, right. For the, uh, I'm just throwing my two cents around here, but I don't, this is gonna sound morbid, cuz anytime we talk about death and child in the same sentence. But I don't think that we should give those away for free. Or I don't think we should not, I don't like to even call it free. I don't think we should not charge for that. I don't, what do you?
It's just something that we saw that the city of Waukesha does. And that's where the thought process came from.
I just, we're overseeing the things in the village and it's, I, it's just my two cents. I think it's, we're the stewards of the money and, and the property of the, of the village. I just think that cutting it loose for, I was thinking of saying leave it at seven hundred and fifty. Everybody else can go up to twelve hundred, because everything is based on people going and look at these plots because they want to have a space. But at the same time, no one is ever going and setting those up for the family. Not for something that you can only have a child. Do people bury cremains? My father, we did. So, that's why I'm asking. Do people still bury cremains?
Oh, yeah.
That was part of the reason of that, why I was actually thinking. It's not just for a child, but people will bury the remains of themselves and their wife. Well, they won't do it. Their kids do. But, um.
Yeah, this area wouldn't be allowed for cremains. It would only be for infants.
There's one section of infants only up there now.
Oh. Okay. And is this part of that section?
It's next to it.
So, this would be another section that's for child and infant?
It would be infant. I think you said three and under.
Correct.
Can't fit larger bodies. Can't have cremains.
Can't have a vault.
Only thing that could go in there are kids.
Do you have to be from the village?
I'm requesting that it not be different pricing for residents and non-residents. It gets very complicated. Some people buy them for, you know, they don't live here, but they're buying it for a family member that does.
No, I get, yeah, it's very tough. And the reason that I'm saying this, I just want you to know that it, even though sometimes I don't always get logical thoughts out, but it was like where my father is buried, none of us can get buried with him because the whole fa, the whole cemetery's full. Unless, I mean, there's no more plots to sell. You gotta have one in the family, find that deed. But so, a hundred years from now, there is going to be, my fear was just that, what happens if all of a sudden there's, we're running out of room in the Milwaukee area and other places and they find out, hey, you can go and get it, you can go and get one in Heartland for, for nothing. I was just thinking. We can, it's not that big a deal. I just, I think that you might all of a sudden have that and all of a sudden you get a bunch of, I don't know. It was just thoughts. Sometimes I think way too far out. But the day will come.
When we were doing this, we found a lot of them were doing it for infants. So, we just thought it's kind of a nice thing.
Maybe you would limit it, that, those to village residents.
That's what I would, the free one, that's what I'm saying. If we're doing it because it's for our village residents, that if you all of a sudden lose a child, you know, that's understandable. I would just hate it if all of a sudden someone's like, hey, you know.
There's been instances where people have donated for like a tragedy. So, it's up to you people, though.
Yeah.
It's your property.
No, it's, I think that's, it's a good idea. It just takes some talking to get through because I, I just didn't, I'd love to, if it's for people that are just from the village that are getting it for free, then I think it's a great idea. But I would just hate that. If all of a sudden they got filled up just because it became the cheapest way to do it and someone from somewhere else was coming in and.
So, you're saying the Village of Heartland, so what if somebody that lives two houses outside the village has a Heartland address, they can't, their child dies?
I know, yeah, I know.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, you're right. This is me overthinking, realizing why I don't think.
So, I'll tell you the hard, the hard part about that, though, Ann, is our, those people that live here are taxpayers and do pay taxes for us to mow, for us to plow, for us to do it. That person who has two houses outside does not pay taxes for us to plow.
But I do agree with Ann also, though. If you're two houses out, even if you don't pay taxes, this is your home. You're coming here all the time and.
Dressed as Heartland.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, I'll shut up now. I'm just digging myself into a hole. It was just thoughts.
Digging myself in a hole.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the adjustment and the increase in the cost of the grave to twelve hundred dollars. I also would like to have the fee for de-transfer is at a hundred dollars. And my motion will also be to leave the fifteen graves to be used for no charge for infant and young child burials.
Second?
Any.
Residence?
Any.
It's been moved in seconded to, you did say raise the fee to one hundred?
Twelve, twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve, twelve hundred dollars for the site and a hundred dollars for a transfer of deed. And then, um, no fee for the infant, um, plot.
For anybody.
Plots. Yes, not restricted to village residents only. Motion? Did we get, we never got a second? Oh, you did. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, it's been moved in second. Sorry, I'm losing my mind. It's been moved in seconded. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. I was losing my mind because Rick noted that, I said, I'm just gonna stop talking about this because I'm just digging myself into a hole. And I had no intention of making that pun or even making that funny. I was just stopping, but I guess it, uh, I just didn't. It wasn't intentional, I promise you. I promise you. We're gonna, we're gonna, announcements, I, right when he, I could, that's why I couldn't think straight, cuz I didn't even do it that intentionally. It wasn't like it was that bright to come up with that quick-witted humor, but it happened accidentally.
So, at the DPW, we just hired Cody Lowersdorf. He is a returning employee. He was gone for a year and he just came back to us. We're happy to have him back. I guess I wanna just give a shout-out to everyone that helped with the Wall at Heels. It was a great event. Police, fire, DPW, rec. It was a really good thing for the village. A lot of people showed up. Just some stats that I wanna share that was sent out from Lynn in the chamber. The average number of visitors for any community is seven thousand. We had seven thousand, two hundred on Friday alone. The average number of bikes and an escort was under eighty. They counted a hundred and forty-two. So, it was a great event. Went well. And the staff with the wall said that they were floored with the way we put up the wall. We set up record time for taking, putting it up and taking it down. And all of the volunteers that showed up and helped were phenomenal. So. All right. So, in May, we ran one hundred, one hundred and four calls for service. Coming into April, we were down thirty-two calls for the year. In April and May, we made that up. We are now ten calls ahead of last year at this time. Our pickup truck is in getting its lights and siren installed and our command cabinet and everything. That should be ready by the end of the week. Hose testing is coming up on the twenty-seventh of this month. That'll be a full day with all the hose and, and that. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Keller on the facility study. I have four people coming to the PFC tomorrow night, three of them with multiple certifications. And then, we have three members and one full-time that have been called up for service. Two are gone for thirteen months and one will be gone for four months. And that's the full-timer. That'll be gone until November. We did escort over the weekend for Arrowhead Baseball. Going to state today. I haven't seen how they did. They had their first game today up in Appleton. So, busy with the wall. Again, all the, it was fantastic seeing the whole village come together and support this thing. It was truly amazing. So.
Chief, is it okay if I ask, you said that we had how many that were getting called up for ser, for service?
Three. I've got one over there now. He'll be there thirteen months. I got another guy that'll be leaving in a couple of weeks for thirteen months. And then, one of my full-timers just got called up. He's in Air National Guard. So, he'll be gone for four months until November. So.
Our part-time administrative assistants, Kirsty Ewings, last day was last Wednesday. Unfortunately, she needed to leave her employment for personal, family reasons. And she hopes to rejoin the Heartland Police Department in the future if the opportunity presents itself. We've also, um, were, are accepting applications for her vacancy. Three candidates applied for the patrol detective position to include Officers Matt Shea, Rachel Endago, and Kayla Nelson. Command staff will be interviewing each of the candidates on June thirteenth. And we plan on filling the position in July once Officer Souther completes his road training.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanna reiterate the same thing. I thought the wall was fantastic. You know, appreciate everything everybody did through the village and the volunteers. I had a few people that came from outside of the area and drove a distance that were very impressed. So, I, like I said, kudos to Heartland. Fantastic job.
Speaking on that, also the Wall at Heels, I'd like to thank Lynn Mentorn from the Chamber. Her organization and the little extra things that she did made it even more spectacular as far as, I don't, to make it, I shouldn't say spectacular, but for the crowd and I, I'm trying to not even go into the specifics of it, but she just did a phenomenal job. And I, I think that it took a lot of her work to get it to the point it was. And the people that were there with the wall said that Heartland is now gonna be their example for how people should do things because it was a gold standard. And they've never had it as nice as Heartland, especially the park and the grass and everything. They just couldn't talk well enough about it. So, thank you.
I was there for the ceremony in the beginning and the, the power displayed when those jets flew over. My kid called or texted me from Arrowhead High School and was like, what was that? The classroom just shook. That was a really, really cool, powerful ceremony. And it was neat to, to be there for that. And I feel honored that I was just in the audience there. It was so cool. So, a great job to everybody involved.
My wife and I visited the wall. It was awesome. I mean, just, we talked to a number of people that lived within the village and nothing but high marks on being able to get the wall to come to Heartland.
Yeah, it was, kudos to the, to the, to Lynn and the Chamber of Commerce. The wall was definitely magnificent. It was humbling. It was, you know, definitely Nixon Park was hallowed ground. It was, uh, you know, definitely Nixon Park was hallowed ground, um, for that timeframe and it was definitely something that was wonderful and, uh, not only providing such a wonderful, a welcome home, as they call it, as they did some of the pinning, but for soldiers that came home and got spat on and, and, and didn't really receive a big welcome home like we see now where people are lined up in airports clapping for them. They came and basically ditched their fatigues and tried to get into civilian clothes so people didn't even know they were there. They just didn't get the welcome home. So it's neat to see them being able to be honored in such a way, not only the ones that are on, obviously the ones on the wall, but also veterans coming and, and having that hero's welcome. Uh, but it really showcased Heartland and, uh, you know, thank you to the Chamber and Kent Rice, uh, helped a lot with that. He works with Honor Flight from Arrowhead and, uh, it just was wonderful to see Heartland showcased in such a way. The park looked perfect. Um, we do have a hometown celebration coming up, so I don't know if we're past the deadline yet, but if anybody's got anything that they're getting in to hop into the parade, uh, that deadline's gotta be closer already passed.
I'll still take entries.
Okay, okay. So if anybody knows of anybody that wants to get in, um, that's gonna be another one where, uh, that's showcase Heartland weekend. I mean, it's, it's a good time and, and, uh, I know some people will be out of town, but they'll be here in spirit because they're usually here, uh, but you know, please, uh, feel free to pass the word along to come out to Heartland Friday fireworks, Saturday, uh, party at Nixon Park and then, and car show and a couple of other things. And then, uh, Sunday, we, uh, have our, uh, what is our Independence Day, but our hometown celebration parade, so. Uh, I don't have any, I don't have any other, uh, announcements. So with that, unless staff had any other announcements, you two?
Just real quick, while Dwight's on, Dwight will, uh, hopefully be going into closed session here in a minute and then we'll get you back. So just stay on.
Motion that we move into closed session?
I gotta, hold on.
I gotta read the whole thing.
We have a, we have a consideration of a motion to move into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral ri- written, oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved specifically, uh, LMRK, DI, PROP, CO, LLC versus Village of Heartland. Two oh two, three, CV zero zero one five three four and section nineteen point eight five. Section one subsection C, Wisconsin State statutes considering employment promotion, compensation or performance of, performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility specifically regarding the village manager and reconvene into open session pursuant to nineteen eighty-five, nineteen point eight five, section two, for the purpose of considering any action as may be necessary and appropriate.
Yeah, all right. I'll make a motion just as Jeff just read.
Dick.
It's been moved in seconded to go into closed session. Uh, this is a roll call vote that's necessary on this.
Trustee Tretschel?
Yeah.
Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Walsh Leger?
Yay.
Connor?
Aye.
President Fanner still?
Yes. Okay, with that, we will go into closed session. Open session.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the settlement agreement between LMRK, DePropco, and the Village of Heartland.
Second. It's, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, to move forward, just as Adam stated, with LM, LMRK, DePropco. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
I'll make a motion that we also approve the new contract with the village manager, Ryan Bailey, as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, to approve the new contract for Ryan Bailey. Um, most notably, I'll, I'll say that in comments. It's been moved and seconded, um, to update and renew the contract for Ryan Bailey. Um, in comments, I guess I'll just would say that noting that one of the biggest things in there is just its five years. That's not a, it's not a raise review or anything like that. Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. For the record, I will add that it's been stated by the President that the last two items that we just did, when we came back into open session, were based on discussions that were held in the closed session. I think it's important to note that.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.